Uh uh like I said, the Association Board just.
Okay.
We're good, we're up we're up and running.
Okay, this time I'll call the uh meeting to order. The regular meeting of the Eastham Planning and Zoning Commission December tenth two thousand twenty four. The attendance please. Curry Brownell, absent. James Curtin here. Richard Pettenelli.
Here.
Bernard Gillis.
Here.
Ed Govins.
Here.
Deborah Lang, absent. Steven Lowmeyer.
Here.
Susan Kinson.
Yeah.
Tony Deming.
Yeah.
Okay, so we have Deb out and uh I don't know what the order has been, but Susan, how about you fill in for uh Deb tonight? All right. And Steven. Oh, and then uh let's say Steven, you can fill in for Curry.
Okay.
On to the minutes of the previous meeting. Twelfth meeting. We had a couple of little things, but uh in the first page here under the minutes corrected from October eighth. There's a misspelling there, it says amend the minutes, clarify that there should be R, no existing.
Oh yeah.
Okay. Then farther down under A. Said the commission members discussed the neighbors concerns regarding noise from equipment and foot traffic. I don't think we were talking about foot traffic.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it was Deb before. Here somebody walks in, sounds right. That that was the only thing I had, anybody else?
My my name, thanks to Absen, it's spelled step ahead.
Oh?
S T E P H E I N.
My name is Missy Nundre, present, being present. I was re- because look at Dave and Bush, Mr.
I was.
You weren't here, so I had.
And uh meet page three, uh the discussion, um so he's good name is a registered Republican. No, she uh she had me listed as independent. Discussion.
Okay, and.
There's a bunch of typos. Under Absen, Steven already pointed out the misspelling of his name, but it's regular member. Um you pointed out under minutes, it should be R. Um under review and acceptance, it's Three Bridges Road Cemetery, correct? Not Tree Bridges.
Right, okay.
So, and two references. The title and also in your motion, it should be Three Bridges. Discussion is misspelled. And we corrected her political affiliation. Um and in terms of it was recommended that she fill Justin's position, do we take a vote on that?
I I so I when I read that and I wasn't sure, to tell you the truth.
I don't think we took a vote on that.
Maybe we didn't find out from the recording or something, whether we did with that action taken or not.
I don't remember a vote.
No, Curry just nominated.
Yeah, I know Curry might have just decided that, I mean, I think we agreed that a letter had to go out and he was, I think it was by consensus, you know, but.
I think.
Yeah.
I think he said, does anybody have any objections and there was no.
Uh. It would have been easier if we just made a motion and it was voted on, that would have been just simpler, but.
When they first.
I don't know that that's. We do a lot of those letters of recommendation, not on a motion, but.
When we um we named Steven to replace Deblinden or um the opening for the um uh alternate, we did take a vote on that, so.
That one we did, okay. That can be done, well, let's just check the record, make sure our next meeting will.
Okay.
There there's no rush on this.
No, but order selectmen already approved.
They already approved.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. But we can correct the record after the fact, we can do that. Okay.
Well, it was recommended by Curry then, but it wasn't recommended by the full board, we didn't vote, but.
I. Yeah, we do do, we've done that where we had like consensus was like, say, is everybody good with it? Yes, and we just go on, we don't.
We've done it both ways. We can.
I know that's been done many times and we probably should vote with each other. Anybody else with any other conditions, corrections or? Okay, well, except the minutes has amended, we move on to. Fields, what do you got?
None.
And now we're up to uh acknowledgement. So it's. Zoning Commission number twenty four dash twenty seven, four thirty two Town Street, property location Scott Berlinsen, applicant and property owner, map thirty seven lot sixty seven. Proposed industrial addition to existing building located in the IG zone.
So, I took a look at this online. And the only thing on there is the application.
Right.
Which he checked the box that he gave us a check and signed it, and that was all that was on the application.
I get. That in front of you. I'm sorry, you know, can't help that. All right. It just, he got ahead of himself. As the applicant, so he got ahead and I said, I need the plan so we can checklist the rest, so he got the plan. Oh. So anyways, and he still got, he 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 gave me rough architecturals, I said, he says I'm he's buying the building, so he says I'm gonna have it when I, you know, for the meeting. This is the Anderson lot next to the firehouse, which has been vacant for ever. As I like, it hasn't been used since the eighties.
It's been a long time, thirty, forty years.
Right. So, actually Mister Anderson's gotten eighty five percent of his stuff out of there. Tractor trailer bodies and all sorts of stuff and all of that, and he wants to uh. He's cleaning it up and he's looking to put an addition on it. He's gotta go to Wetlands twice. So my recommendation is we go through that process and not hold the public hearing until uh January twenty eighth.
Okay, since it's just acknowledgement, we haven't any discussion about that plan there, okay?
One point, the sign by N O S and it's got subject to some on it. About Tesla, when he can't do that.
Okay.
So if this comes in like this.
Oh, no, no, there's a reason why, there's a reason why. That proposed, there's test pits that gotta be done with it again, cause the old test pits are too old for chat, that's why it's not. They're gonna between now and then, they're gonna.
We're gonna, we're gonna get a s- an engineer seal on this.
Seal and and they're gonna go do test pits to do it, that's why it's not there, because it's not, yeah, they they had a long discussion with Chad about the district about the old test pits. They're closed, but they're not, they're gonna redo them, cause the age. That is why.
He's gonna stop putting engineering on survey.
Okay, anybody else with any uh comments before we uh move on with the acknowledgement?
No.
So public hearing.
So what, twenty eighth of January?
Twenty fifth, no, no, I'm sorry, twenty eighth.
January twenty eighth, says hearing set for January twenty eighth, motion paid and seconded, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Proposed.
Who made the motion?
Ed.
I made the motion.
Wow.
It was proper.
Who's seconded?
I thought you did that.
Okay, oh I.
So they.
A lot of stuff being assumed around.
So Jim, they won't be through Wetlands by that date?
Yeah, they will.
They will.
Yeah.
They're on the Wetland agenda for December and January.
Oh, okay. Okay, on to uh number five, home occupation, planning zoning uh number twenty four dash twenty six fifty nine Sarah Baker Road. Public location Sarah Jane, I guess that's a Jane N, right? Applicant, Maple's LLC property owner, lot forty three lot nine caregiver.
So this is uh probably easiest when it comes for a home occupation, she just needs an office only, she private caregiver, people in their homes. So she goes there.
So what's the difference, Jane, this and any of these other ones that we've been handing out, so we'll swear by just saying, okay.
Yeah, I mean, this is a minor application, cause she she, you know, basically it's a it's a home and an in office.
So it's a minor. None of the office in somebody's house.
It's blue ink. Blue ink. I'll take yours.
It's blue ink too.
All of this?
Yeah.
Sorry. It's a music blue ink too.
Now, she doesn't own the property.
Yep, the uh the owner's side.
Where? So it's property owner's signature first one.
It says applicant signature, but underneath it's clears.
Oh, in the front, first page.
In the first page, okay. I was looking.
So when they go to the bank to open up a checking, a business checking account, it's required for them to fill out something with the account?
So, correct, for me to for me to, then now when they come back after this is approved. They can do it, get a doing business status form for us and walk down to the town clerks and file it.
All right, is everybody okay with the office on uh Sarah Baker Road?
Seems pretty harmless.
Yes.
Seems pretty harmless, yeah, that's it.
Okay, so maybe you have a motion to the effect that uh.
Can I ask a question? So if the property owner is Four Maples LLC. Are we granting the um home business occupation to Four Maples LLC or to the current tenant?
Both, it runs with the property. But the tenant needs it for their.
Property.
Paying account.
But it will, but the approval goes with the property, right?
Correct. Okay.
So then, if she moves up. Then the people that own the house can say, okay, we already have new new tenants come in and say, you know, we already have a business.
But under our new regs, they have to come back and reapply.
Because they're gonna be operating under a different LLC name, so.
Well, that's what I was wondering.
They won't, they won't have a pool for that.
But let's say hypothetically, this is something like a small gift shop. That we decided, you know, they did yarn or something like that and they.
Home occupation.
Home occupation. And they moved out. Somebody said, no, I'd like to do something similar to that, they could come back and talk to us about it, cause it's already been previously. But they still have to come back as.
They still have to come back.
As new renters and owners. Yeah.
Okay, so we're going to make a motion to approve this uh home occupation, Sarah Baker Road?
Motion to approve occupa- home occupation uh. Application twenty four twenty six fifty nine Sarah Baker Road, Sarah James Davis. And Four Maples LLC for uh an office for a caregiver.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Okay, so.
I'm gonna sign the top of that one there, and I'll take it. Yeah.
Number six, discussion, and the discussion is the Homeland Towers LLC and Silico Partnership, EBA Verizon Wireless. Plans to construct a wireless telecommunications telecommunications facility in the southwest portion of eighteen point oh nine April parcel. One ninety six Eastham Coaches Turnpike and Eastham Committee. One question I got about is that decibel level thing. Uh, I don't know, what does that compare to forty one decibels? That's twenty four seven, this thing hums or whatever it does? That's on the first page.
Well, right, and near its property line, so if you wanna.
It's below the the regulation, but I'm just saying, what is, what is, what are we, the sound, I mean, somebody who's nearby is still gonna hear something.
So. So right now, there's a chart at the end that he supplied the next day, at the end, so he has forty decibels, library, bird calls. You know, but. That's to the property language, it's the dry one.
If you want to point a point a reference, a lawnmower's ninety decibels.
Yeah, you go to the last page, there's all these things listed.
The decibel level, okay, so forty is.
Less than.
I don't know what a library sounds like, it, I'm just saying, this thing hums twenty four seven?
Right.
Is that what the sound is?
That's something right there, that's it right there.
Okay.
That's that's probably about the same.
Yeah, at the property line.
It runs, it runs all the time.
Well, sure, it would be on.
This one's running.
Your cell phone would be running all the time.
There's a fan in it to keep it cool.
Hmm.
Oh. That's what's running, that's it. Yeah, that's the fan, yeah, that's nothing else running, you think it's computing something wonderful.
Fortunately, there are hundreds of feet of any house, but I mean, it would concern me if somebody was anywhere near him, I gotta listen to this thing, I mean.
Well, there's no one there.
No, there's no one within hundreds of feet of that.
Right.
Did you, you seen the license?
Yeah, you're going to submit photo.
They're calling balloon or?
No, they 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 said in the, at that public hearing that they decided that flying balloons is subject to, you know, oh, it was windy and the balloon was leaning over and everything else, so they're doing photo simulations for all their applications now. Their, you know, viewpoints all the way around.
Uh, I saw they had some comparisons about uh, they didn't think if they went on the tower at the uh transfer station, that they would get the coverage we want.
The mapping they provided shows that they're not getting anything out of it down on the turnpike. And scratches of the upper reservoir and sections of basin.
Showing how some of these other carriers are getting coverage that they're not, but.
Well, they want the thicker coverage, they want the, you know, you could be in the white.
Five. Five G.
You could be in the white section and still get coverage, but it's not to the level that the green and the blue is on these maps.
Did we ever get a list from them of the, where do they have their damn towers around town? You think, cause.
I looked it up online, and there's only two towers in town that carry.
That there, that Verizon is using?
Verizon's on, one is on Mount Pernasis and one is uh on Honey Hill.
There isn't a Honey Hill tower.
Aren't they, aren't they down on the Legion too? They at the Legion, I think they're at, no?
Legion.
Nope.
And I don't know. It's not listed, I don't know how accurate this uh this site is.
Okay. Well, it just strikes me that if you're using a bunch of these other towers, what the hell are you building those?
Exactly. Well, uh, but the ones at the Legion, the ones at the Legion, no.
I I just see this, it's all.
I can tell you right now.
Hold on, is it in this report here?
Yeah. So it says existing Verizon coverage, so if you look at.
Let me look it up, look map.
The existing Verizon, which would be the third page, it's the first map. So. It's got Eastham two, American Legion, they've got one there. Eastham three, the, that's the Mount Pernasis Tower. Eastham, they've got the Honey Hill, and they have, you know, the one on the edge of Salem. So they have three in town. See, it doesn't show on uh Legion Field. They do.
Yeah.
Maybe cause they don't own the tower, the Legion owns the pole.
Well, it's listed, it it's tow- the the town is listed, then the tower is uh, kind of the tower is listed. And then it's uh who's on it, and it has a, you know, it's a. Oh, it has.
Is that the sighting council spreadsheet?
No, no.
So they're not on the Millington Hill one that covers the hop yard and all that?
They're not on that one, no, no. And so when you look at the second map, it it chose, you know, the coverage on Eastham, go just to turn bike. Larger portion of basin, larger portion of the upper reservoir versus Parker Road. Where the nickel's at one sixty and nickel's at one ninety five. That's what I asked him to. Write us with coverage.
Here's a question for you, are there any other five G carriers in town? Is Verizon gonna be the first five G or? I I don't expect you to answer the question.
They do have, they have the uh the Legion Field on there.
Eighteen G, it's five G.
And also you're seeing that, I figured out what you're seeing, the police tower.
But that's police tower, yeah.
Two hundred and twenty feet, so it needs, it has to have a light.
Right.
You said northeast, you want, I told you the first line.
That's it's northeast, it was.
It's north, so that would be northeast.
Right, yeah.
Where is the police tower?
Right on O'Connell Road and the town property line.
Oh, right, right, yeah, right there, I told you, it's up.
Yeah. Yeah. You know, top of the hill.
Cause I know from basin road, you didn't see that.
Right. So they wouldn't be able to put anything on there?
That's.
It looks like they have something up there.
Yeah.
Just north of sixteen.
That's the one that I thought it was first, that's the uh. That's theirs, um. It's actually just next to Day Pond.
That might be the one I'm looking at.
No, no, it's it's a hundred D, it's the. Swing over a little bit, cause when you look at it, it it, the tower's two hundred and twenty feet, it's required to have a light, I looked at the construction diagrams, the one at Goldchester off of sixteen, and there was no light.
I know when you're on uh over by Frankel's Farm here and down the hill, when you see that tower, it's to the left of Dill's Farm, and that's right up to Concerners.
Yep.
Yeah, that would make sense.
So where do we stand with? You know, their approval and where they're, they're coming to us at some point, or they're not, they're never gonna come?
No, no, they they're, they don't, they they their their step is to file an application uh with the sighting council, they haven't done that yet. When they do, we will, you know, we will get notice of what the full application material is, it'll be available.
Makes adjustments like we did with the solar farm.
Exactly.
We think the sighting council will go for towers that everybody's using, I don't get why they're gonna start building separate towers for separate companies and stuff.
But that's the problem, you see, we told them to go to the existing towers to use it. They gave us the simulation maps.
They're saying they can't, I don't know.
They they they, in fact, one of the things he said, he said, by the way, we will, we will probably try to use the transfer station, but that's only to cover one forty nine, not to cover basin, the upper reservoir. And and, you know, Eastham Coaches Turnpike. So I think that's where the whole and the argument is, is that there are gaps that are provided by this site.
Oh, there's gaps, like Shagmark. That spot's been there for the last twenty five years or something.
My house isn't great, I'm I'm in the area that'll be helped out by.
Unless we get rid of landlines if we could, well, you can't.
Where are you, Steve?
I'm I'm above the the boat launch for basin, I'm on uh Ballack two extension, that hold that end. Uh I don't know, I think at this point, you know, cell phone usage, it's 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 a utility now, I mean, more people use their cell phone than a landline.
Well, we'd like to, but you gotta have reception, that's the problem, when you're driving down the road, you can't have, you gotta pull over for calls, because you drive a couple of miles, you're gonna lose it, you lose it, and that's just everywhere, and that Verizon, I've had Verizon since day one, and it's not any better than it was on day one.
Getting a little better down towards the bridge, although there is one spot in Tylerville where it'll just cut out, but.
Now, the highways are covered well, you can drive down the highways and have calls, but for instance, you tighten, that's such a low spot compared to the highway.
It's actually gotten worse at my house since we moved in, within eight years ago.
Yeah, in the last couple of years, it really, really cut down, yeah.
It's gotten worse.
Cause I used to have it all along Smith Road, I had.
I think we gotta, we gotta cut some more trees, we're gonna have Susan.
The more trees they take down, the worse the uh the reception is.
She fails to see the humor in that. Okay, uh anybody, what, do we wanna send any questions to them, is there something that we'd like to officially send to them that they could answer, I mean, is there something that we need more information?
Let me ask you, Jim, do, does Verizon have the right to be on all these towers if they so choose?
Yes.
Yeah.
I mean, well.
Unless it's unless it's filled, then that's an issue.
Yeah.
If it's filled, then, yeah.
And maybe if the height, if they don't get a good height, they might not want.
It might not be worth going up.
Might not wanna be, right, yeah, okay. Cause it seems like these towers should be in uh a critical infrastructure that everybody should be allowed to to use.
Well, that's why when they build this one, believe me, they'll turn around to AT and T, the company that building it is not Cora- Verizon.
No, I know, yeah.
So they're gonna turn around and say, well, we did this work for Verizon, but when we do your photo simulations, you've got gaps here too, so.
Yeah.
You might as well join.
Well, is this a a speculative tower? Do they have um this company that's putting it up, they have client companies that will be installing antennas on this, or are we, if you build it, they will come kind of?
No, they they were. They were directed by Verizon in this area to get search zones, when you look, there's that search zone circle. They identified it as a hole that they'd like to fill, and the fact of the matter is, is that.
No, there's a gap here.
So the cottages in the, you know, the lake communities have a higher density of houses and they're trying to fill that gap.
I had a question about the backup generator, noise from the backup generator, so that would only be used in a power failure, correct? Um and why would it be exempt from state or local noise standards if they're placing this uh antenna um within a residential area?
If they're calling emergency situation, that's why I think it's exempt.
Just like, just like, you know, just like neighborhoods and all that, that have, you know, you can't do this or that, you know, for a certain hour, once you, your power's out, you turn the generator, it's twenty four seven.
Anybody's home generator.
You don't, you don't need to do a noise analysis on it, but they are muffled.
They're loud, yeah.
They're loud, but they're muffled, I mean, not, you know, it's it's not like a a Harley going by.
No, 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 I know, but I mean. You know. When the power's out, we're all kinda.
Everybody's still.
Well, it's just, it's.
We're kinda glad you have self-service, but, you know, so that, I think it's just exempt because of emergency status.
How many more towers are we gonna need in town to cover five G for singular?
Well, this is a.
Eighteen G.
Coverage they gave us to. So, no. No, the five G was, you know, they gave us, you know.
So.
You got a gap at Shagmark, we know that, that's populated.
But they have local uh like, you know, ballacks put.
Yeah, the people living there, but if you're driving through there with a cell phone, you're gonna lose reception, it's.
Yeah, but couldn't, couldn't Shagmark put up some kind of?
They they have, they, I I think on their grounds, they have, it's cause right in their yard, your reception is okay, but the road, it's a dead spot for somebody.
Just doesn't extend.
Now, I thought ballacks, when I heard Ballack Silo would be used, somebody put something on that.
I think AT and T.
Okay, well.
Yeah.
But Verizon just doesn't, you know, so.
Yeah.
So now, the blue on the map shows the best coverage, then green is less coverage?
Correct.
White is no coverage or?
No, white is what we're used to. Sporadic coverage, you know, and and so, you know, yes, I do I get, I get coverage, do I get coverage out in Eastham Fishing Game Club where it's all wooded? Yes, I do until, you know, I go around the corner and then I don't.
Fair enough. Outstream and moving.
Yeah, exactly. So, i- if I was gonna speculate where they'd be putting it, the next one's gonna be somewhere out towards Lake Edward to cover that, cause there's a lot of units there, there's gonna be somewhere down in towards Eastham Village, cause there's a lot of units there to cover Eastham Village and Shagmark. So, a minimum of two, are they gonna have to do the the hop yard and? And the eight and the East Adam Fishing Game Club, they won't do it because there's no population there to serve.
But somebody did it, I mean, they built the tower, I think the state wanted it built because they wanted emergency phone service down in the hop yard, which is, you know, there's a bunch of hikers out there. Falling down and breaking their ankles, but, so these companies, they just say, yeah, we don't care about the service out there, but.
And then that's the other thing too, if they decide they wanna do a better coverage on the hop yard. Um, they would tag onto that one that's on Tarpaulin at the top of the hill from the hop yard, east of the, east of the hop yard. But. Right now, they're they were given a direction to look around these areas and that's what that map with the round circle is and.
So we could expect more of these towers to show up?
Yeah.
Comes sold off their development rights to the state, right, years ago?
Yeah.
So, what if they came in, the state came in and wanted to approve someone to put a. Tower on top of their big hill by the sports.
So that'd be the worst damn thing on earth, cause it's got one hundred percent visibility, because you can see it from the base all the way to the top.
It would, but. But it's, if the state owns the development right, could they say, oh, we own the development right, so we can do that?
No, no, the Department of Ag has that conservation easement.
No.
So.
Right now.
No, it's it's, yeah, you know, particularly, it's forever and ever and ever.
Yeah.
Yeah, we've had that discussion.
That's that's one thing I was worried about.
Yeah.
If they could come and say, well, yeah, we've got, right, so we could put something.
No, the state, the the state, I mean, they they could have come in, but that tower that he has there, that silage tower. That thing's pretty toasty, so they did a structural look at that one's back and said.
Yeah, silage shot.
Well, yeah, you the problem is, it's silage, basically gets the corn squeezes and alcohol and cement don't really work all that well. So the bottom starts getting crusty.
So we're trying to get. Real good coverage all through town for these companies. And, but we're we're trying to hide the towers.
Try to, you try to.
Have you ever driven down the Merritt, they have, they have cell towers on the Merritt that are, I mean, it's not the best, but.
True.
They're faked out to look like a like an evergreen tree.
If if that's going into a hill and they've got it, I think those are okay.
Yeah, a little ninety-one.
But when they put them up in the middle, like if they put a hundred ninety foot tower here in a forest of forty to sixty foot trees, I. My personal opinion is, I'd rather just stick a pole up.
Yeah, right.
Cause they look.
They.
Look at Sequoia doing here.
And it also causes a lot of pressure with loads and all that, it changes the whole dynamics.
It's dynamics, there, I used to work up in Cromwell and there was one like in the backyard of of where our plaza was, and it just looked stupid, I mean, I I.
I, they don't really look like trees.
You're putting lipstick on a pig and it and it makes it look worse.
They don't have the branches on that anymore, do they?
I I I I didn't, you know, they they hired me to clean up their backlog and then they let me go.
So we don't have any sale with this?
Well, if you see something that is technically sound or makes sense, I mean, we had a lot of say when we looked at the one that was gonna be in the hop yard. And it was next to existing trails and stuff, and there was a better alternative. A better, you know?
A lot of goals.
A lot of goals, that we did that field, what was that, ten, twelve years ago?
Ten, twelve years ago.
Yeah, but we went, they had the balloon desk at that point, you could, they had one next to the hop, they gave three balloons up that day. One was for the East Adam Fishing Game, one was on Haywardville Road, then one was right across from the north parking lot at. The hop yard, that was horrible, that it just loomed over the top of you, really gonna come down at you. And then the one at the end of the trail was horrendous, and so, you know.
Good spots for reception, but.
Yeah, and and the next day, I was able to say, why, have you approached these people at the top of the hill? No, I said, well, they're very approachable and it was done and. You know, can't see it from the hop yard, which is a state park and.
Almost can't see it from anywhere, Tarpaulin.
It is, it is. So, you know, when they put the, I will kick out to you as soon as I see it posted on the. You know, sighting council and we'll all look at it again at that point, if there's something that sticks out. We've got something to run with, it's good, but.
There will, there won't be a public hearing on it.
There'll be a public hearing will be uh sued with the sighting.
Yes, uh.
But you still haven't seen the sighting council's application?
No, no.
Application.
No, cause they, I mean, literally, they sent this to me, as I'm heading out the door, I'm about ready to shut the computer off, the thing went ding, it was. Here it is, you know.
I guess we have to assume that that putting um. Something on the tower at the transfer station isn't isn't gonna.
It doesn't cover the things that they said they want.
Yeah, I know, but how do we trust these people?
This is, this is, you just, you dump it into a computer and you're done.
Yeah.
They're they're not making this up, this is, you just put it in and it runs a simulation program for you. This is where I got in the argument with the sighting council about whether I was qualified to read, and I said, I'm not colorblind.
Is there any provision under sighting council regulations, and I'm not familiar with them, this is why I'm asking the question, that um. Could preclude them from approving? Um, an additional cell tower where there's an already a concentration of cells, towers. In a, you know, contiguous area.
So, they, I looked at some of their rulings and there are times that they have, because they've stated specifically in the ruling. That it seems that coverage can be accomplished with co-location at site A or B. That's why we asked them to do that, to demonstrate if it'll work or not, and they, you know. And I and I noted to them that, you know, there was a spot at that hundred and sixty and that there could be an extension on the tower. Cause the original application in the building plans that are here said so, uh, so they did that, and so.
I think nobody would have a problem with a cell tower if they were already using the towers that we have, we know damn well Verizon's not on all these other towers.
But it still won't cover this hole.
Yeah, but.
This is a bargaining thing, they put one here, and then they're gonna go and say, okay, AT&T, you control that. We wanna go co-locate, we'll let you co-locate, we'll switch and swap our our fees.
But at the same time, they could have put, you know, antennas on Alex Silo on top, but. Never did that, and I mean, I don't know why they would go out and build a new one to cover some blank spot, there's tons of blank spots in Eastham. The Shag Bark thing, major intersection of multiple state highways, they don't.
I'm not sure why they, that's that's a good, that that'd be a question, I think.
I don't know, I mean, and all they had to do is put an antenna on Balix, that would be going, right?
So, so I was at a wood shop in Killiworth and they had a tower on the property. They they didn't own the tower, but they gave the the companies permission to put the towers up. And they paid the wood shop five thousand dollars a month just to have their tower on their property. So, they put this tower up, they own it, you can only imagine what they're getting.
So somebody's making some money and.
Yeah, for every company that puts something on that tower, I mean, it's, they they wouldn't do it if it wasn't making them money. But, um, you know, and. I don't know, if they get other companies to do it there in the cell service.
Well, we know we're not, we're not a highly populated town with a lot of cell phones running around, but at the same time. Here they would bother to spend the money to pay for a new tower and put a thing up to get, oh, we got a dead spot, well, you got dead spots all over the place, but you don't put a. Antenna up over at the transfer station would obviously help them, that's no guarantee, they have nothing.
But it doesn't cover it as well.
Doesn't cover everything, but then again, this isn't going to cover everything either.
How about the steeple over at the on the church by Colchester Turnpike there?
Well, that's just covering that little bend there, you know, that's that's the problem, you know, this this. That's like, that'll only go so far.
It seems like it would go down down the hill towards the river, plus it'd go over towards the uh firehouse.
I'm thinking that steeple is probably only seventy.
Which was that on the steeple at the B Y church?
That's only seventy feet maybe.
They'll put them in there, I did a steeple at Noak Village, where the cell company paid us to refurbish the entire steeple. The church didn't go there at all. I suggested that when you were trying to paint it.
As long as it can be stuffed in there without ruining the look of the steeple.
Yeah, they they they, all they do is they change out, they change out the louvers from from wood or metal to fiberglass, so it doesn't interfere. It has the same look, we we redid the whole steeple in Noak Village and we just had to tell them what side to turn off so that we didn't get caught while we were working.
Well, uh, okay, I guess we beat this their voice.
Really, it's a historic.
No, but I mean, anyway, we'd love to see them put more antennas up on what's already there before they build a new one.
Yeah, that's right.
And there's no guarantee with this antenna that we're gonna have, um, you know, uh, ubiquitous service in East Adam as Jim said, there's gonna be. Still spots where we're gonna lose coverage, it's not like Verizon is crediting customers when they drop the calls.
Same money to make, no matter what.
Verizon doesn't credit anybody for anything, so, you know, um, at some point, um. People who live in rural towns may want to just uh accept the coverage that's available, um. And rather than um face the prospect of even more and more and more of these towers going up with with five G coverage and needs.
The only problem with that is the more people use cell phones, the 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 telecom companies are gonna get their money. So your landline is gonna get more and more expensive, because cell phone is the way it's going.
Yeah, and the business is, that's, it's really business use, it's not personal use, but in the business, we need we need the damn phone.
Mm.
But the reception is, I mean, it started out acceptable, but twenty years, thirty years later, I'm like, what's with Verizon, I mean, this is absurd. When other, I know other carriers are better, but they're on all these other taxes.
Well, twenty years ago, we were making phone calls and playing snake. But that that's that's a techno, no, I I played it like once, but I actually don't like video games, but, you know, that that was the technology available. Now, I'm out of, you know, I'm out of business, right, oh, I gotta look that up, and I'm on Outlook and I'm on a Teams call and, you know, so.
Ordering parts out of nowhere on a cell phone.
The capacity's not there on these, you know, the capacity has to increase.
So what would be the projected timeline of something like this? If you're wishing that they start now?
If they they, they said it's like a six to nine process with the sighting council and then they, you know. Put the thing up a bit to construct, so in a year, year and a half? Before it's up and running?
Yeah. So basically, buddy, buddy.
Okay, we ready to move on?
Yeah.
Alright, let's do it, I'll land you some.
I got nothing, we can get out of here.
Okay, okay.
Motion made in.
Motion made in second, is there any further discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.